City Council for May 27, 2025 is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Messiakos. Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Vanuelos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
And Mayor Lash is present.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms for this meeting? The motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Are there any members of the city council that would like to lead the council in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, Alderman Franco.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any members of the council who would like to lead us in tonight's invocation? I didn't want to just single out Alderman and Bug. I wanted to give some of the new members. Alderman Bug, would you do us the honors?
Oh, I would definitely defer to someone else. Anyone else? Any takers? No? No?
Reverend Collier, would you like to? Come on up, take the microphone.
Oh, she's never shy away from the microphone.
Shall we pray? O mighty God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for another day. We thank you for our mayor, John Lash, and all of our new city council members. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for giving us a mind, Lord, to be residents in this city that believe in doing what's right by the people of this city. We ask you, God, on tonight, if you will bless our city council as they make decisions. Lord, if you were blessed and touched their minds, God, they will make the right decisions. And, oh God, we thank you for being so good to us. We thank you for being gracious to us. And we ask you, Lord, to bless this meeting on tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, and the next agenda item, the clerk will please read. The mayor's report will begin with the awards of excellence for historic preservation.
Yes, I'm here to present the 2025 Mayor's Awards for Excellence in Historic Preservation. We have ten awardees. I do have brief little descriptions and photos of each one, and I was going to bring them individually up after I talk about their project. And we have a plaque, and let's go and get a photo with them. All right. And just to also let everyone know, following the awards presentation, we have a reception at the G A R. So, following the council, and anyone else who is in the public would like to go to meet the awardees, is at the G A R 23 East Downer Place. All right, our first awardee is 116 Northview Street. 116 Northview Street, Quincy and Terry Jeffries. Over the past few years, the homeowners have meticulously worked to restore their circa 1892 home, including removing a nonhistoric balcony on the porch and installing a new roof and gutter. The house was painted in a medium yellow with white accentuating the corners, window trim and porch. Recently, the homeowners restored the stained glass windows found throughout the house.
Good. I'm supposed to present it to you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we appreciate it. Our next one is 212 South Fourth Street, Jose Castro. The owner has purchased the home in 2018 and recently updated the 1872 house with a new color scheme, being white, medium blue with white trim, using the two colors to highlight the Italianate window and brackets. Mr. Castro here? 255 Longdale Avenue, Gary and Penny Mayer. Over the past two decades, the homeowners have lovingly maintained this 1931 French Eclectic home designed by well-known architect Herbert Spiller. Recent projects include installing a new stone stoop and tuck point in the house. Work also included replacing wood around the turret, repairing exterior woodwork, and repairing the garage door and painting in a three-part color scheme.
Welcome up, Gary and Penny. Thank you. You can tell we're still adjusting to not having Clayton here, but I wanted to say thank you for investing in your home. I've actually knocked on that door. Beautiful home. Well, thank you again. Congratulations.
And the next one is 424 West Park Avenue, John and Jennifer Rousch. Over the past few years, the homeowners have worked meticulously to restore their 1914 home. The windows and doors were beautifully restored, along with the addition of new custom wood storms to protect the windows and doors. And the house was, paint was stripped, and a new two-part color scheme, blue with accentuated white trim. 14 East Benton Street, Timothy Marion Owen. The homeowners removed the luminescent siding in their 1860s home, exposing the original wood clapper, window trim and molding along the fascia. The wood siding was restored, and the house was painted in two-part color scheme. I don't believe the Owens could make it either. 443 to 445 Iowa Avenue, Craig Wetter. The homeowner removed the ugly asphalt shingles, exposing the wood clamber under this 1891 home. The house was painted light green with different accent colors, including cream on the horizontal bands, dark cream highlighting the wood vertical panels, and red accentuating the Italianate brackets along the roof lines. 454 Iowa Avenue, Wendy Woodside. The owner purchased this 1893 Queen Anne home in 1887 and has lovingly maintained it through the years. Recently, the homeowner painted the house in a four-part color scheme, the first floor being brown and teal on the second, and red was used to accentuate the different areas throughout. 509 East Downer Place, Michael Scott Estes. The home is located just outside the nearest historic district. The homeowner purchased this 1890s home in 2014 and has meticulously painted the Queen Anne home in a three-part color scheme, using accent colors to highlight the Queen Anne. And I don't think Mr. Estes could make it either.
Michael Skadestis available? I guess not. I've knocked on this door too.
808 North Lake Street, On Path Realty, Inc. The new tenants of this building made a great effort to appropriately restore the original features of this 1929 colonial revival building, including repairing the original tile roof and repairing the brick. The brick was then updated with a fresh new color, new coat of white paint, along with black to accentuate the trim, windows and chimney, and the windows were also restored. I believe there is. And our last one is a lifetime achievement, 506 West Downer Place. This is George and Gail Piccolo. The homeowners purchased this prominent Italianate house in 1979 and has wonderfully maintained the home and large corner lot for over forty years. The house was built in 1867, originally was owned by the Janes family, and it was also a subject of well-known artist Ruth Fancy Cole Ford. And they recently did work on their porch and the fascia and Italianate brackets.
Thank you for putting that together and doing an excellent job reviewing all of the applications and recognizing those people who have invested in their properties to beautify the neighborhood. Is there going to be another short presentation here from staff on the Give Responsibly? From Shannon or Martha? Trying to make just, there were some questions on this, so I wanted to give a short update to the council.
Good evening, Martha Pashke, Director of Innovation and Strategy. And I'm here tonight to share with you a bit more detail and background on the Give Responsibly campaign, as I know it's raised some questions recently. And I did want to acknowledge that the timing has been an issue. We wish we could have presented this sooner, but as everyone knows, there's been a lot going on everywhere. I'll also share at the end some improvements that could be made to the totality of this campaign, because I, my understanding is that some pieces of it have been more visible to the public than others, and so there might need to be a revisiting on this campaign. You can go ahead to the next slide. Oh, sorry. I haven't done this in a while. Thank you. So, the purpose of the campaign, it stemmed from ongoing work to collaborate with community organizations on homelessness. The Innovation and Strategy Division has been working on the issue of homelessness in the city for about eighteen months with a number of partners. Most recently, our collaborative group met with over forty-five stakeholders from the city, as well as the state's chief homelessness officer.
Could you move closer to your mics?
Yes, sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, this was initiated through research on best practices around the country in addressing unsheltered homelessness, in particular, the compassionate enforcement model, which balances the needs of a city to enforce its ordinances and the needs of individuals struggling to survive and needing more support in the community. It was created to mimic a campaign out of Dallas, Texas, also called Give Responsibly. The intent is to increase giving to organizations providing needed services, as well as connectivity of individuals in need of those services. One anticipated lesson we learned was the highlighting of services that we lack. I did receive a phone call from an individual who felt he had been harmed by the campaign, specifically the street signs, and let me know that because of his status, he was ineligible to receive services from many of the organizations that were listed. So, we had a good conversations. I was able to connect him with some different resources and give our 311 staff a heads up on the need for expanding the services that we have listed and available to share with people. This was also a response to some issues faced by the city in 2024. Specifically, APD reported seeing more individuals coming out from the city of Chicago and other locations and panhandling and even selling items on the side of some busy streets and intersections. So, there was some safety concern, as well as individuals coming out and leaving unwanted donations at sites where people experiencing homelessness were frequenting, leading to a lot of litter and concern about public health and safety. So, that's where this started. The images at the bottom of the screen were the initial carousel explaining the background of the campaign that was intended to be shared through public media, or social media, sorry. So, the campaign in total included the logo that was developed, the intro carousel, the street sign, a community resources sticker, which I might have a picture of later, that listed immediate services or the most highlighted services, as well as information for calling 311 and the QR code for scanning to learn about a fuller list of services that are available. There was also a flyer, a window poster, services card that was shared with the C O P officers, and eleven additional community educational social media carousels. The sticker ended up not being used. It was intended to go on the back of the signs. There was some concern about safety with driving and being distracted by the sticker. So, this is an example of the window posters that were put up at over forty businesses around the city, as well as some community facilities. It was a call to action to give via the webpage posted on the city site. These are some screenshots of that webpage that list ways to give to those organizations, as well as how other organizations can contact us to be listed on the page as well. Additional sub-pages on there were more resources, so the Youth Resource Guide, the Senior Resource Guide, Community Development Resource Guide, Emergency Resource Guide, how to access additional resources, the 211 helpline, information on feeding people experiencing homelessness. A lot of times, food donations are given to individuals, but they might have health needs or food sensitivities that need to be taken into consideration, so we need to be sensitive to that. There's a list of services offered, as well as different pantries in the area, and then a page listing information about the temporary warming center, how to access it when it's opened, and how to access information about when it'll be opened, and how to donate to the organization that was contracted last year. So, the street signs, again, the intent was to increase giving and connectivity to the organizations providing needed services. You can see the community resources sticker on the far right. That, again, wasn't used. We did talk about removing the QR code to make it less distracting. It was still, decided that that sticker would be distracting to drivers on the backs of the signs, so it was not used in the end. Sixteen intersections had been identified. I believe fifty-four signs were put up in total. And then, this was also in part out of, there was a desire to have something put up. There was information in looking at data on giving to individuals that are panhandling that demonstrated that a majority of people, sixty to ninety percent of people, don't feel comfortable giving directly to people. However, they do feel compassion for those people, and so there was a thought that having something like this indicating a different way that people could give could increase giving to support services that are needed. So, the social media carousels covered topics, including why people become homeless, myths about homelessness, how Aurora is addressing homelessness, harm reduction, the power of collective action, how to make real impact, a guide to accessing resources, ways to volunteer, donate, small acts equal big impact, how to meet your local heroes, and how your donations change lives. The English carousels were all run in April, I believe, over the course of about twenty days. Thirteen thousand people or more saw them. A little over a thousand people clicked on the carousels to learn more. We do have Spanish versions of the carousels that are now complete. And then, I just have a few examples, because I don't want to take too much of your time and go through all eleven, but I've got a couple here. So, these, this was the carousel. So, if you're not familiar, carousels are where there's multiple images that kind of slide across, or you might have to click through, depending on which social media source it is. So, this is the why people become homeless. Talks about the housing crisis, mental health care and health care gaps, job loss, financial hardship, unexpected life events, et cetera, to help de-stigmatize the experience of homelessness. And then, the myths about homelessness carousel. I'm not going to go through all of that again. And then, how Aurora is addressing homelessness, and this talks about the collaborative work that's needed, and that's been started within the city. So, just to wrap up, the Innovation and Strategy Division is, continues to be dedicated to improving connectivity to services as a means to help those in the most need. We do have some recommendations for improving. The community resources stickers are really beneficial, letting people know what resources are out there, and additionally, giving them contact for the 311 number so that they can get accesses to the resources that are not very readily available, or that we may be lacking much of in our city. Incorporating feedback from persons with lived experience would be important if we move forward with this, revising some of the language to better fit that feedback that we might get from individuals. Increasing the list of service agencies. We already received outreach from two different organizations that have been added since this first launched, and then making recommendations based on the identified gaps in services. As a part of all of this work, we were able to present to state legislators last year at the city's meeting about the need for more resources directed towards street outreach work and permanent supportive housing. So, we've learned a lot of important information through all of this work, and again, this campaign is one small piece of the overall work that we've been doing on homelessness. We have developed a document on strategies to prevent and end homelessness in the city. It contains nine strategies, forty-three goals. We've done it in collaboration with a large number of organizations in the city. It's been reviewed by the State Office to Prevent and End Homelessness. They gave us feedback that we incorporated, and we look forward to growing the work that we're doing in this. We know it takes all of us, and in current conditions, it's going to take even more of us to work on this together. So, we're definitely looking for direction from the new administration and the new elected officials. But yeah, that's the campaign.
Thank you for the update, Martha. Any questions for the council? I know we have a busy night tonight. Alderman Seville?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Martha's work on this and city staff, and I think this is important to focus people's efforts and what's really important in how to give responsibly to help the people that actually need the help. I have a question, though. There used to be signs in my ward that talks about giving responsibly that seemed to be, take it down. Is that part of this campaign?
Thanks, Martha. So, Alderman Seville, this administration has chosen to take down the signs, and that is partially because they, this whole campaign is very thoughtful and well-intentioned, and we felt that there weren't enough, as much as it was nice to say, give responsibly, who decides what's responsible and what's not? And when we're talking about safety, of course, safety is a huge issue, as we have people in intersections, and that is dangerous. But what is also very unsafe is people living unhoused, and that causes an incredible risk to anyone. And I would like us to think about that question and how we can better work towards those goals and the forty-eight recommendations to ensure that we, as a city, are encouraging people to give in a way that can help our unhoused. It is true, as Martha said, there is one individual, but many of these individuals that are on the street cannot access the resources in which we are guiding people to give to, and that's for a variety of reasons. It is because, for example, Hesett House has a six-month wait, they have to prove they've been in the area for six months before you can access their services. The Aurora Food Pantry, you have to, no longer can walk up, I believe, to get services. You have to come by bus or car. They still help with street outreach through A I D, which is great, but if you're unhoused, you can't cook frozen things well, it's hot, you can't keep things stored because you don't have refrigeration. There are a lot of issues as far as that goes. What we want to do is roll this out in a way that involves the most impacted, and that means our unhoused people, and asking questions in a way that are intentional, and make sure that we're making decisions based on the most impacted with the most impacted. And I think Martha and her department has every intention of doing that moving forward, and is going to work more with our street outreach teams that are out there on a weekly basis, if not more, to do that. So, that's the next step, is working with our most impacted to hear their reflection and what they need, and then going forward with the Give Responsibly perhaps, or a modified version, because this work is very important and is a forefront of this administration's goals, but we want to do it with those most impacted. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so it sounds like some of the communication pieces weren't used with this when it was rolled out. Additionally, they did not raise a significant amount of money, per my conversation with Joe Jackson. And I don't know if you have any of those numbers, or if you send them over. If he hasn't, that's fine, but.
I'll let Martha answer that question. I will say that the communication pieces went out, as Martha detailed, but only as paid ads. And I think that we want to work that our community sees more of that information, which is really important, about why people become homeless, what is, what are the root causes? How can we address those root causes? And how can we inform the public on the best ways to help? And then, let's look at that, who's deciding what's responsible or what's not.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Alderman Bug.
Yeah, just a point of order. We're doing a lot of new things in the transition. It's going to be very important that each time someone comes to the mic, you state your name and your title for the full audience here and in Cyberland.
Sorry, you caught me on my first time not doing that. Sorry, Alderman Bug, thank you for the reminder. Shannon Cameron, Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office.
Alderman Franco.
So, I had a lot of feedback from my community that were very happy with these signs, because they saw less panhandling, and their concern has always been, and this has been. they saw less panhandling, and their concern has always been, and this has been going on for a while, the safety issue with them standing in the streets. And not too many people are comfortable when you come to their window and start knocking and asking for money. That's a problem. So I understand the homeless problem, and we should address that, but I don't know, I guess I'm going to need how to connect the dots. When somebody hands somebody standing on the corner two dollars, how that's going into helping them become, finding a house? Where does that money go? Because if that's what we're doing, I don't know that's really helping the problem. If you talk to APD, they will tell you more times than not, it is not going to helping them eat or find housing, it's going for other things, things that we probably would frown upon. So I think if we're going to go through with whichever way we go, find out if they're getting two or three dollars, or five dollars, or a dollar, where's that money going? Because if it's not going to what our purpose is, then maybe we should think about an alternate way of doing it. And I think I would agree with my constituents that there's been less of that. Now, I can't comment on what, how much money has revenue we've collected for that to help them out, but I think working on that piece is a good idea. But I don't know if handing somebody two dollars or three dollars in the street is going to find them a home or find them food necessarily. And I think until we find out where that money's going on a consistent basis, we should probably rethink those signs going back up. I think there's a lot of support for that, so that's all I have for that.
So I think the one piece in looking back at the timing of this and addressing the root causes is that those individuals, many of them, we've now identified, are not eligible for many of the services that we have, and we do have some very serious service gaps in the city. And I think without addressing those, it's hard to justify withholding anything. It's a very tricky and nuanced thing that needs to be looked at from a policy level, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, we're weighing the potential needs, the potential positive use of that money with the uncomfort from some of the people with dangers in the street and not wanting somebody to come up their door. Police have told me many times that people come up to your door, you don't know where they've been. You don't know when they're talking to you and that airborne thing is going on. That's not a good thing either. There's a lot of bad things in this. So if we're going to weigh this out and balance it, let's take in consideration what the community thinks also. Let's try to help everybody, but I got to make sure that we do that. And if we're going to do it, balance it, let's make sure that the balance going for those in need is actually going to provide for them in need, because I don't know that it really is the way we're doing it right now.
Any other members of the council?
Mayor Lash.
Alderman Barrero.
Sorry, just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, I wanted to thank staff, commend staff for putting all this information together. It's a lot of information that's very helpful for people. And I'm hoping that this group of stakeholders that met, I hope that they'll continue to meet and continue to discuss the issue and look at the long-term solutions, because that's what we're talking about, the chronic homelessness because of some substance abuse or mental health issue or something like that. But that needs to be addressed. And also, I would just urge that if there could be more outreach done and reaching out to individuals, there's been some families out there with some small kids. I saw a lady with a kid on her shoulders, and, you know, that's not a good place for them. So if there could be more outreach efforts to educate them as to where to go for help, that would be great. Thank you.
Alderman Nunez.
You mentioned next steps that are going to be taken with the weather we get here in the Midwest. You know, we really don't have much time. Do you have a rough ETA or timeline with as we go into the summer and then, you know, fall, and then next year, you know, we have a winter that starts in October sometimes?
So I have engaged with Wesley Church, who did contract with the city this past winter to hold a warming center. I've asked them to come and do a presentation to report back on that to city council, and so we'll let you know about that as well. I think it's important that we also talk about cooling centers, knowing that the first thing that's going to happen is actually we're going to have very high temperatures and want to shelter people from that. And then, of course, yes, absolutely. So, you know, Martha's department and community services, as well as in a larger piece, will be continuing to work on this, look at steps, next steps for the cooling centers and providing something. In the past, that's been city buildings a lot, and city staff has worked on that a lot. We need to kind of weigh what we think the best use of taxpayer dollars is to assist and make sure, because it's not just our unhoused, it's our community members that also have no air conditioning, have no ability to do that. They might need cool spaces as well, so that will be something we'll be talking about. And I think this is evergoing. I believe you have a meeting tomorrow or the next day with the coalition.
So we have an internal working group with city staff that meets monthly. The stakeholders from the community meet quarterly, and then there are working groups that can meet optionally in between those if they're working on specific strategies or goals together. And to your, to your point directly, last year, we did begin work on the RFP for the temporary warming center in June. So yes, we do need to start thinking about that really soon.
And that'll come through the PHST committee, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions before we move on with the rest of the agenda? Thank you, Martha, for putting it together.
Thanks, Martha.
Next item on the agenda, mayoral appointments. Madam Clerk, will you read the agenda item?
Twenty-five zero three seven five, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Karina Kano to the Sister Cities Commission.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
So moved by Alderwoman Smith and seconded by Alderman Barrero. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Is Karina Kano here today? She's not here. Let's give her a round of applause, and we'll make sure to welcome her. Next agenda item is public comment. Madam, first of all, I guess if you came here for an award and you want to get up and head home because you maybe have school or something else, you're certainly welcome to stay as we carry out the majority of the business, but I want to give people a minute to get up and depart. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the rules for public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment this evening?
Angela Collier.
Is Angela Collier here? I think you've done this before. You all have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Lash and City Council. I'm Angela Collier, Ward One resident, hi, Alderman Barrero. The first thing I want to do is thank the Neighborhood Festival grant for the award. I received email for the award for the Save Our Youth this year. We've been doing that project for thirty-five years. We will have to offer that project on June twenty-first at Garfield Park in Ward One. And also the Soul Food Festival. We also have, I received the award for that project. We will offer that project in July in Ward Seven. I'll give you more information on that in Alderman Bug. And also, what I want to talk to you about tonight, Mayor, is I pulled in a gas station at twenty-nine forty-six East New York Street at the Circle K Shell. I pulled in at Park and I pumped twenty dollars and one cent gas. I got a notification from my bank that the gas station had charged me a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so I turned around, went back in to talk to the clerk, and she said, well, we put a hold on people's account when they pump gas. I said, well, I didn't authorize you to do that. You don't have a right to do that. So she said, well, call the police. I said, okay, I think I will. So I called the officer. This is my report number. I said, you don't have a right to charge the residents in Aurora a hundred and twenty-five deposit or hold when they pump gas here. There's no warning on your terminals, there's no receipts in your terminals, there's no signs in your gas station, so who gives you a right to do that? So the officer came, and he said, he's been to that gas station several times with complaints of the same issue. How is this still going on in our city when nobody knows that they're holding our money for two days? I said, you have a choice. I have my bank manager on the phone. You can either remove this hold, I can give you twenty dollars and one cent in cash, or I will dispute it. So they refused to remove the hold. By the time I got to my bank, my bank manager looked at it, they had removed it. So I know they're intentionally doing this, because they did remove it. It's only because I demanded it to be removed. So the residents in this city need to be aware of what's happening. So I'm asking city council tonight to make the public aware of what's going on. I do have my receipt and my police report if you'd like to see it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Sunny.
We're not going to be silent when you try to demonize the nation of Israel over the military and political conflict with the Palestinians. This goes for the current mayor of Aurora. This goes for the Alderman of George Keith Larson, who wears Palestinian garment to the city hall, and the current mayor, who displays Palestinian flag at your house. You brought the international conflict to the city hall, the Africa and the Middle East issue. The US government doesn't recognize Palestine as a state, but you still fly the Palestinian flag in your house. I don't know which country you represent, Iran or the United States. The US government recognizes the nation of Israel. God gave the land, the homeland, to Israel, according to our Bible. That's my belief. I have a right to. They have a right and responsibility to defend Israel from the terrorist group Hamas. Hamas kills and rapes innocent children, women. They bomb the buildings and kill innocent people. Hamas flies the same flag you fly in your own house. As an Ethiopian Orthodox Christian, we do support Israel. We currently have Ethiopian serving in Israel Army. Proud, the Ethiopian serving as soldiers and generals. We support Israel. From the Jews came our Bible. From the Jews came our Messiah, Jesus Christ. Proud to call Jesus my Savior, my God, a Jewish man, and he's from Israel, and proud of that, my Jesus, my Lord, my Savior. Israel holds significant for Christians primarily because it is the birthplace and the land where Jesus lived, died, and was resurrected. Jesus was born in Bethlehem, lived in Galilee, and died in Jerusalem, making Israel the heart of Christian faith. Israel is the land where the foundation of church was laid. The Israelis predates Palestine by millennia. Jesus was born at a time when Palestine does not exist as a political entity. Here to thank the Prime Minister of Israel, Benjamin Netanyahu, for defending Israel, IDF soldiers, Israel Police Department, and the Ethiopian serving as generals and fighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment.
Shannon Buckley.
Good evening, council. My name is Shannon Buckley. I'm a fourth ward resident, lifelong Aurora resident, and sit on the board of Aurora Mutual Aid. AMA, as we affectionately call it, is a collective that focuses on building local power through mutual aid, education, and community advocacy. I would like to address the Give Responsibly campaign that was launched this year. I do want to say that we were invited to participate in the discussions with the other community advocates and organizations, but unfortunately, the meetings were being held at three o'clock in the afternoon, and we're all volunteer boards, so we all work, we can't attend. But while this campaign might have been created out of goodwill, this campaign has been extremely harmful to our unhoused neighbors. Some unhoused folks that we have assisted have mentioned losing nearly ninety to ninety-five percent of cash and hand donations. When asked, these funds are most often used to cover temporary housing, transportation, and food. Temporary relief going to our unhoused neighbors does not cause poverty and houselessness. So encouraging our community to not give to them does nothing other than create further poverty. The economic factors that enable poverty are wage stagnation, rising costs of housing, criminalization, lack of accessible jobs, transportation costs, limited healthcare, and more. This campaign only stigmatizes our unhoused neighbors and perpetuates a narrative of deserving versus undeserving poor. We commend this administration for the removal of the signs, but we hope there will be more thoughtful and direct action towards addressing the underlying causes of poverty. Thank you.
Thank you for offering public comments. Will the clerk please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
David Cannon.
My name is David Cannon. I'm a resident of the fifth ward and a board member of Aurora Mutual Aid as well. Thank you to Alderman Franco for inviting residents to share our thoughts regarding the harmful Give Responsibly campaign. My eyes were open to Aurora's ongoing housing crisis in 2022 when I began picking up trash weekly at the tent encampments in town. Since then, I've remained a community with several unhoused friends and have continued to show up at the community warming shelter at Wesley. Through this direct engagement, I've become acutely aware of the suffering endured by our most vulnerable neighbors, and I do everything in my power to change the systems they create that create and perpetuate that suffering. At first glance, the Give Responsibly signs may appear benign, encouraging Auroraans to donate to nonprofits that provide support services. But upon closer reflection, the true intent becomes clear: to redirect organic direct aid and remove unsightly poor people from public view. This is known as punching down. We should not prioritize the comfort of our wealthy neighbors over the survival of our poor ones. The actual effect of these signs is to give drivers express permission to ignore people in need in the moment, encouraging either a delayed donation to a nonprofit or a sense that someone else will simply take care of it. This is what we call deferring responsibility. It's important to recognize that not everyone qualifies for the services offered by the nonprofits promoted through this campaign. So for some, giving responsibly means not helping them at all. Absent a functional social safety net, we must support each other in every way that we can. These signs disempower. They send the message that we shouldn't help our neighbors directly, even when it's within our power to do so. The suggestion that aid must be dispensed only through an intermediary is paternalistic. Who am I to tell you what your needs are? So fellow Auroraans, ask yourselves, how can I help right now? Instead of give responsibly, I encourage you to give directly, give generously, give often, give unconditionally. Reject the status quo. Leave behind old, worn ideas of paternalism, rugged individualism, authoritarianism. It's not working. People are being left behind. Instead, let us build the city that we deserve, where all of our needs are met. We have the resources. We have the resources. It's just a matter of our priorities and a commitment to equity and justice for all. And I'll finish with free Palestine.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
George Gutierrez.
Mr. Gutierrez, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is George Gutierrez, and I'm here representing Chicano Times. I am a resident of Aurora. And I'm here to speak on an ordinance that... And I'm here to speak on an ordinance that APD is introducing for the City Council to create, Section 27-135 of the Code of Ordinances entitled vehicular nuisance. This is something that Lieutenant Walcott is here to introduce. And let me express that I'm not against this ordinance. I completely understand the necessity of it because of all the wild stuff going on in the streets and celebrations and things like that, the racing and all that. So I'm not against it. However, I'd like the City Council to consider other aspects of it. And you also know that I represent, well, I don't represent the lowrider community, but I'm here speaking for the lowrider car culture, which I'm a big part of here in Aurora. We do a lot of events. We do a lot of caravanning. We participate in parades and everything as well. I'd just like to be careful that some of this does not affect the lowrider car culture, also families as well, because during Mexican Independence Day, there's a lot going on, and part of this is probably created because of that. But there's also family members that drive around with flags on their cars, and they're not taking part in none of the craziness. But sometimes they may get caught up in it as far as if there's video cameras, dash cam, body cam, or whatever, they may catch this, they can be fine just because they were caught up in the middle of it stating that it was an unlawful rally or caravan or something of that nature. Also, in the evenings from 9:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m., you know, there's a thing called unlawful vehicle rally, which is 10 or more persons or four or more vehicles. But family members can gather after an event or something like that. And I understand they're saying these are, you know, individuals that are breaching the peace and things like that. I get that. I'm not against that. But you also have those officers that will take the opportunity to profile some people and say, oh, they're probably a part of this group or that group, and, you know, issue them tickets as well. I'm not saying the whole APD is like that, but those are issues to consider. Also, the fines, I think, in my point of view, a first offense, $1,000 fine, then $2,500, and your vehicle seized or impounded. I'd like the City Council to consider that, whether it's excessive or not. Lieutenant Walcott, I did have a conversation with him. I expressed to him I was not against it, but I'd just like, you know, make sure, as I stated, that the community is looked out for as well. Another thing is he stated that people were with stolen cars, had guns in their cars. And I'd like to know if the City Council can ask if that has been the case here in Aurora. You know, if it is, I understand, you know, the reasons for all this, but is that something he's citing that people, you know, had guns and stolen cars here? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment, Madam Clerk?
We have one final. It is Thu Elliott.
Mr. Elliott, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Thu Elliott. I live and work in Ward Four. I was glad to learn recently that the Give Responsibly signage was coming down, and I wanted to give you a window on why from my perspective. This past winter, I was one of many staff and volunteers in the emergency warming center, and all of us there were fortunate to have opportunities to be in conversation with, rather than about, people who are living unhoused. We learned repeatedly that they are our best guides in the ongoing work of ensuring safety and creating more access to basic needs, a category that includes housing, employment, and freedom from criminalization in its subtle and aggressive forms. I don't question that there was positive intent behind the street signs. I do question who the positive intent was for. Too often, it seems we work to protect the safety of the secure, but we don't work at the same level to create safety for the not secure. Too often, our first strategy to make homelessness disappear is to make the homeless disappear. Our first job must always be to ensure the safety and create equitable access for everyone in the city. Those signs being placed directly in the paths of homeless people who rely on donations to create some safety for themselves had the effect of removing security for many who use donations for necessary food and occasional shelter where they can meet other basic needs like a shower or a night's rest in comfort. While I'm glad that one strategy is being retired, I hope we'll all continue to campaign for change to the systems that perpetuate homelessness, including the limiting belief that service agencies are the best and final answer. In reality, often being responsible isn't being truly responsive, and the best any of us can do is respond with all the generosity we can muster to the person standing in front of us making a request. And finally, since none of us are free, while we fund in occupation and genocide, I finish with free Palestine.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
There are not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, we will hear both the consent agenda, the direct-to-council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk please read both agendas in their entirety?
250063, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into agreements with Indoff from St. Louis, Missouri, and Volunteer Supply Industry from Aurora in amounts not to exceed $32,500 and $53,866 respectively for the purchase of lighting materials for various locations throughout the city. 250258, a resolution to award a contract to builders paving in the amount of $5,873,168 and to appropriate $3,500,000 of MFT funds for the 2025 Citywide Street Resurfacing East Project. 250292, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024, amendment number three for the 2024 fiscal year. 250327, a resolution maintaining the maximum number of Class D downtown core onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from French 75 Gallery and Lounge in Ward Two. 250336, an ordinance annexing property located at 1681 Bilter Road to the city of Aurora. 250343, a resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement and additional vehicles for the city of Aurora fleet for $1,717,548. 250359, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one replacement Ford Hybrid utility police interceptor from Curry Motors for $52,488. 250369, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into a purchase agreement with Axon Enterprises for the procurement of squad car cameras and related equipment for the Aurora Police Department for a total not to exceed $99,664.08. 250372, an ordinance creating Section 27-135 of the Code of Ordinances entitled vehicular nuisance. 250379, a resolution to award the Bow Ridge North Water Main Improvements Project located in Ward Six to Miller Pipeline in the bid amount of $3,173,802.50. 250382, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to utilize General Services Administration and Houston Area Council Cooperative purchasing contracts to purchase a pair of vehicle repair lifts for the new Public Works Facility from Vehicle Services Group in Madison, Indiana for the combined amount of $97,610.25. 250385, a resolution to award the Fox Valley Center Drive Water Main Replacement Project located in Ward Ten to Fox Excavating in the bid amount of $209,835. 250389, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class B onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from GJM Pizza, Doing Businesses, Doing Business as Och and Lou's Pizza Pub, Farnsworth Avenue, Ward One. 250390, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D Fox Valley Entertainment District licenses with self-service strolling and package sales endorsements unofficially related to the application from Fox Taps, Doing Businesses Tap, Bell, Drink While You Shop, Fox Valley Mall in Ward Ten. 250393, a resolution approving the I.DOT low bid award for construction for the North Aurora Road underpass at the CN Railroad. 250396, a resolution to purchase mobile vehicle barriers for Meridian Rapid Defense Group for use at special events. 250397, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the maintenance of state routes with the city of Aurora. 250443, approval of the minutes of Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 City Council meeting. 250454, approval of the minutes of Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 Special City Council meeting.
Let's all vote.
Second?
Is there a motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith? Is there anybody who wishes to remove any items or have any further questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on both the consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda.
Alderman Barrera?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
This motion carries and is approved. This concludes this portion of the agenda. There's no unfinished business. Our next section will be a closed session, but before we entertain a motion to go into closed session, I just want to communicate to the public what we're doing. My seat became vacant as Alderman-at-Large. To replace me on the council, I have the ability to appoint someone to fill my role for the remaining two years of the term that I was elected to. We received 135 applications online. There were additional people who applied after the deadline, so the number was actually larger than that. Of the 135, I personally knew 40 to 45 of those people. We narrowed it down on staff. We interviewed 14 people, and four people have been contacted and who will be interviewed by the council as a whole tonight. So the reason that we are going to be entering executive session is so that other members of the council can ask these candidates who are seeking to replace the Alderman-at-Large position questions. And at the end of this, we're going to come back from executive session, and we'll be hopefully having consensus around one person to appoint to that position, and then appointing that person to two committees, and they will be sworn in at the next council meeting on June 2nd. And we'll take their seat that night and join this council. So with that being said, we are in need of a closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Open Meeting Act. Section 2C3, for the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in this act, including a vacancy in a public office, when the public body is given power to appoint under the law or ordinance. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session? Motion made by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrera?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
Okay, the motion carries. We now have closed session, and what we're planning to do is go to the third floor so we have a little bit more space. And hopefully for those members of the public who wish to stay, we will be back hopefully within an hour, hour and a half's time. And if the Alderman's chief of staff could work with Mr. Thompson to locate the four individuals, and we'll all go to the third floor and meet there in about five minutes. and we'll all go to the third floor and meet there in about five minutes.
The Aurora City Council for May 27, 2025 is hereby reconvened. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Is that here or yes?
That's going to be a here.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos. Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benuelos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith, still here. Alderman Bog.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
And Mayor Lash is present.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business?
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Will the clerk please read the title of the next item under new business? First, real quick, I just want to say thanks to the members of the Aurora City Council for joining me in the effort to interview four excellent candidates. There was 135, so you've made it this far. There were compliments for everybody who participated in the process, and I appreciate everybody staying late. The next thing that we'll do is -- the clerk, please read the next agenda item.
25-0452, a resolution granting the advice and consent of the mayor's appointment to fill a vacancy in the office of Alderperson at large.
So I just want to briefly announce that the general consensus of the council is that Will White will be appointed as the next Alderman at Large, and at this time, I recommend the appointment of Will White to the office of Alderperson at Large. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
A motion.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Pass.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
There being no further -- sorry, motion carries. This resolution is approved. Welcome, Mr. White. The second issue is that we will be appointing Alderman White at the -- to two committees to serve on, following your swearing-in, which will happen at the next city council meeting on June 2. So if the clerk will please read the next item on our agenda.
25-0457, a resolution granting the advice and consent of the city council to the mayor's appointment of members and designation of chairpersons and vice chairpersons of the standing committees of the city council.
I recommend the appointment of Alderman at Large, Will White, to fill the vacant seats on the Rules Administration and Procedures Committee and the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved.
Mr. Mayor, can they --
Alderwoman.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can they attach the assignments to this legislature item for our next meeting? The item is not attached.
Yes, we can do that for the next meeting. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 25-059, Summary of the Large Bill List. Is there a motion to --
Motion to approve the bills.
Motion made by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions or discussion on the bills? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The bills are paid. There being no further business --
Motion to adjourn.
-- come before the city council.
Second.
The motion to adjourn made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Congratulations.